How can I do it tonight? Awesome, my name is Grant. We are Town Council. And yes, we are from Denver where the weed flows like wine. And you'll enjoy it. We sell it for free in vending machines. Everything you've heard about it is true. So come visit us. We'd love to have you. We're going to show you an original forum we came up with called Town Council. We are going to create a fictional town right before your eyes based on your suggestions. First thing we're going to do is show you some of the residents of that town. And then we're going to show you an open forum from that town's council last night. And then we will proceed from there to build the town in front of you. So to get started, we need some suggestions. What is this town's number one export? What do they make? Just shut up.
Milk.
Dairy milk.
Anything else? There's nothing wrong with that?
Nail clippers.
This is not weird. What's that?
Nail clippers.
Oh, I love it.
Nail clippers, I like that. Okay, so this town's main export is nail clippers, okay? They have a festival every year. What is that festival that they host every year that they're very proud of?
Is that all there is?
Is that all? No, is that all there is festival? They host the is that all there is festival. They make nail clippers and they have an odd tourist attraction that you can see from the highway that they try to get you to pull off the highway to see their tourist attractions. What is that tourist attraction that they have?
The world's largest thumb.
The world's largest thumb. Yes! This town has the world's largest thumb. Is that all you have festival? And they make nail clippers. This is Town Council.
They say I can't do much on the color of my nails.
Yeah.
But I invested in these nails. They're the longest nails in the county.
Award-winning. Yeah, she's got some nails that nobody's business. I keep mine short.
I wish you would support my nails a little more.
Well, when we moved this town and they said nail clippers, I heard male strippers. That's why I came with this.
You know, let me clean that out for you a little. But needless to say, the whole nails have been causing a couple of problems in our marriage.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, chafing's one thing, but yeah, she keeps them sharp and I don't always like that.
I told you, it's to defend us from the predators.
Yeah, no, I know. We can't carry no weapons, so she's truly armed with the fingers. And it's cool for me, I feel safe, but not in the bedroom.
You know, sometimes I feel like these nails are my whole identity. What if I just cut them one day?
I don't think I'd like that. I wouldn't know you anymore. It'd be like, I mean, it's one that you could like cut your hair, make it real short. You could change your outfits and all that. But if you changed your nails, I wouldn't know you.
Oh, but I feel like I can't wait with you. You don't like me with the nails?
No, no, I like you with the nails. I don't like what you do sometimes with the nails. That's different. Because, I mean, you know, a back scratch is one thing, but when I have to get a transfusion afterward? That's another. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying.
So...
You may stop.
I'll start. Well, because this is my favorite subject.
Yes.
I am in charge of the town's giant thumb exhibit.
And I am Theodore Thumb, the patriarch to the thumb dynasty. My grandpa. My thumb, the man born with the largest thumb in human history.
Yep, and then you're so proud of it.
Oh, oh, there is a lot to be proud of.
The biggest thumb in history.
That's right. As they say, the heavier the thumb, the harder the heart of the man.
Yes.
And he was a very stressful man. Everybody wanted to see his thumb.
He did, yes.
And many women wanted to procreate.
Just have it.
Just have it. I mean, strong thumbs are good for work.
Right.
And manners, and they make money. Let's be honest.
Right, right.
That's why I wear these gloves. Because all of my assets are right here.
Right, right, right.
Right here.
Yes, yes, there's a lot of money in those assets.
Yes.
Yes, and unfortunately, we were only able to spend the inheritance on a giant sculpture.
Yes.
That looked like, yes.
My family is notoriously selfish with our inheritance.
Right, yeah.
We often put in our wills only things that pay tribute to our lives.
Right.
And we make you spend all the money all the time.
Exactly, nobody else matters, just the thumbs.
That's right.
My darling baby brother, you're so cute, Teddy.
You gotta stop, it's Selena.
I know, I know. I just fiercely look out for you. His girlfriend just dumped him. And she said, "This is all you have?"
Yeah, yeah.
Remember saying your sweet body?
It's true. Our first night alone together on the behind the bleachers, you could hear her saying, "Is that all there is?"
And I overheard it and being the head cheerleader, I had to go back there and whoop some, you know? I just, I was so upset. No one speaks to my baby brother that way. Only I can speak to my baby brother that way, you know what I mean?
You always fight my battles for me, you know? I mean, I gotta stand up for myself sometime. I can stand up for myself, okay?
I know you can, you're so sweet. You're so sweet, baby boy.
I'm almost 24 years old.
Oh, and you still live with mom and dad and it's so cute. It's really cute. I just wish that you would, you know, I told you, you can come live with me in the big city. You can get out of that po-dunk little thumbs uptown. It's time to get away.
I like it there. Mom and dad's basement has got its own...
Musk. It's got a stench.
I was gonna say pool table.
Okay, okay, it does have a pool table, but you know what the big city has? Many bars with billiards galore. You could go play in your major whenever you want, baby boy. Hey, hey, look, come, we come soon. Also making chocolate chip cookies like mom does every Sunday. It's okay. Oh, baby boy. I promise, I promise. I am so lonely ever since my cat died. I just need you to please, please come move in with me. I have so much extra time on my hands. I would really love it.
I...
And plus, I'm like really struggling to make new content, so...
I'll start to plan to do it.
You start to plan to do it?
I'll think about it.
Okay, I need you to say yes. You will move in with me. Come on, come on, Ted, come, Teddy. Well, there you go.
All right.
Okay. You ready for tonight?
I dread the third Tuesday of every month. I'm telling you, I can't take it.
Why? You get to hear it from the public, right? No one had better opinions than the public. Right.
Complaints, the whining, the crazy ideas.
Yeah. Let's see who's out there now.
All right. All right, I'll take the first person.
Who's the suggestion? Oh, you over there, yes, yes.
Honorable City Council of Knuckle City, I am the president of the is that it festival? And I would like to propose that we put a little bit more effort into the is that it festival? If I could read some of the Yelp reviews, we have notoriously low score. I...
Nothing's better than the public reading things they printed out from the internet. Go ahead, yes, yes.
Okay. One of them, the first one said is that it. And I wasn't sure if they were being ironic, but they gave us a one star. Okay, second one says underwhelming. Second one says, third one says, I'm expecting more. So listen, these are the problems. I have a solution. Okay, we need a wow factor, okay? We need people to want to come to Knuckle City. So someone was overwhelmed with the that's all there is festival? Yes. Now listen. Bret Michaels. Bret Michaels, okay? I heard you can book him pretty low. And I know people will come for miles and miles and miles to see Bret Michaels. I doubt Bret Michaels is available. I, I, this is gonna work. Trust me, this is gonna work. If you just, if you just give the approval, I can get Bret Michaels here.
Well, I mean, as we are, as we are government officials, we can't just approve something. That would be way too efficient. There's no way we can do that.
We'll take it under advisement.
Take it under advisement. You'll hear about six to eight weeks.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Oh, you over there, you over there!
Yes, I'm a nail clipper's ink, yay? I have a little complaint. All of my customers are complaining that the trolls have uneven edges on their fingers. You catch my drift? There are trolls in this town and they're a little upset that their little clippies aren't looking so neat.
So what I'm hearing is we need a better pharmacy in town for whatever's being prescribed.
No, no, no. I was your teacher, Bethany, you little scum.
Don't do it!
I just wanted to come and tell you that there's a quality control problem with the nail clippers ink.
Okay.
Okay, we need to have some cutesy because the trolls will get a little scratching.
It seems like she's asking us as a government body to regulate a private business.
That's right.
Now, that's gonna be, that's gonna be six months to that way.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
But we will take it under advisement.
Well, duly noted.
Thanks. I think, I thought I saw, I thought I heard another person.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I'm Jim Walters. I'm a concerned citizen of this town. I have sent several terse emails to the urban planning committee with no response. I do not like the forethought or lack or what of there's been in this town when it comes to our blessed thumb. The amount of traffic we have now clogging things up. All the hitchhikers that keep coming here to see the damn thumb is blocking traffic. And no one's doing anything about it. Seems pretty wordy for a guy who's sending a terse email.
First of all, I did not know we have an email account, so...
No one's monitoring that.
That is a real issue. And I thank you as a citizen for bringing that to our attention.
All right, we'll watch out for...
We'll monitor it, yeah.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll alert the police. Thanks, I think.
So does anybody else have a, have anything to say to the public fora? Maybe anything you wanna shout out out of turn? Yes.
Do you mean people that are just in the audience?
Yeah, just randomly, just show up and get casted. Yeah, I mean, yeah. I'm the most in time, that's what crowds do.
You men, you were telling me last night in the bar that you had a very concerning problem.
Yes, um, hi, um, the thumb looks really phallic.
You see what you wanna see.
Yeah, it's not our issue, you can...
And every time...
So anyway.
I...
These are fabulous.
Thank you.
Let me get the big file out.
Yeah. Um, I need a little bit of your advice.
Sure, yes, what I'm here for, darlings.
I was talking with my husband. This is what he knows me for.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you can't, oh, you gotta keep the nails.
Yeah, you might have think, you might have thought he would have known me from my New York accident, but it comes and goes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It comes and goes, but...
I've been there.
I, I just, I have to go home tonight. And I don't know how to tell him that I broke a nail.
Whoa! That, oh my goodness. He'll see that, you know how to see that. How are you gonna hide that?
I don't know. I was thinking to tell him that indoor gloves were in season would get me at least a little bit of the way, but it's never, it's never gonna catch up to the other ones.
That might get you till March, maybe April, but after that, he's gonna catch on.
What? I don't know. I don't know what to do. You think I should cut the rest?
First off, that's a big job. That's gonna take some garden shears, okay? I'll tell you what, I want you to think it over. Go home, conceal the hand, okay? The best you can. Now, he's gonna wanna try to trick you if he sees that hand. You gotta make sure you conceal it, okay? Do whatever you can, okay?
But he loves doing peace signs, well, how am I supposed to do this?
Have faith. Be strong.
Your platitudes helped me so much just then. It looks like a thumb. I just don't see it.
I think if you have a dirty mind, you might be able to make something more of a thought out of it. But I'd say it also looks like a thumb.
Right. I mean, you'd have to put a lot of imagination for it to be so... I mean, I...
My, my great grandmother was known for her rose bushes, so we added a beautiful rose bush. Two beautiful rose bushes.
Right, on either side.
And it really brings together the history of our fair city.
Yes, and it just like, it's the whole, it cups the whole thing together.
Yes, with the hand underneath it cupping it all together.
It's like a symbol of a hand.
Right, it's unity.
It's unity, yeah.
It's unity, it's everything. It's everything our town represents, so...
Yeah, I just don't think we need to change anything. I mean, it's perfect as it is.
I have a confession.
Oh, no, you do?
I love our fair flag so much, I got a tattoo on my shoulder.
You did?
I did.
Okay.
I'm in this town to win this town.
Okay.
Margaret, now...
So you got it on your back?
Yes, it's right.
It's on your shoulder, huh?
It's on my shoulder.
It's there already?
I am concerned by this ridicule and this laughter. But I'm going to just let it go. Let the hooligans have what the hooligans want to have in our fair flag.
No, it's a beautiful tattoo, yeah.
Yes. Margaret, you're a wonderful assistant.
Yes, of course.
I don't know if I'll tell you that enough. I, uh... I do not know what to do for my wife. She's acting strange lately. And we have, we have a very important dinner tonight.
So, oh, so you need to...
I think she's expecting a gift.
Okay.
I had never given a gift that wasn't actually for myself and my wife.
Right, right.
You understand that, Margaret?
Yes, 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 yes. So you are asking for advice, what kind of gift gift her?
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct, she, yes.
You know what she just wants?
That's what I'm asking you, Margaret.
Oh, yeah, okay.
What does she, what, what does she want from you?
She just really wants you to tell her that you love her.
Really?
Yes, the helping walk.
That's so simple.
It's simple, right? But try it, try it. I love you and just see what happens. I know.
Margaret, are you trying to trick me?
No, 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 no.
I'm a man of honor, Margaret.
You can even say that she's, looks pretty.
Are you trying to steal me from my wife, Margaret?
No, I would never, ever.
You just want me to tell you that I love you?
No.
Or run away with you? Get the thumb dynasty in your backcourt?
Well, I mean, I have...
No, I've noticed, Margaret, I've noticed what you've been doing.
Worked on that thumb sculpture my... And if that thumb sculpture is anything...
Margaret, this is, this can't be. This is forbidden fruit, Margaret. Listen, I know like...
But I'm the only...
I get caught up in the, in the, you know, work-wife situation just as everybody does, okay? But I am a gentleman and I appreciate your advances, but this can, this can go no further, Margaret.
But I'm the only woman in this town that has...
Those bushes are so well trimmed.
Thank you, thank you. They were my grandmother's Friday joy.
Were you at that town meeting last night?
Of course. I'm a concerned citizen, I go to every town meeting.
I'm very, very concerned. There was a lot of like hexing energy in the room. Did you sense that there was some weird woman that was talking in like cryptic tongues about nail clippings?
I did notice something about that, yes, yes, I did. I didn't know what that was about though, so I ignored it.
Yeah, I think there is some kind of like Harry Potter shit going on. I don't know, like, like witchery and wizardry and...
In this town?
In this town, yes. Because there's nothing in this town. The only thing it has going for it is a thumb that looks like a dick.
Wait, hey, 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 don't forget the rose bushes.
Okay, the rose bushes are very nice, but it's, it's all very...
But, but there's a point. Ever since the rose bushes came in, and people at least just used to think it was a thumb. But once the rose bushes came in, that's when I noticed the weird shit starting to happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, like that Bigfoot guy that looked like, that looked like, um, like a beast? And he was like clipping all the roses and then putting them weird little domes?
Yeah, it was like, it was like a rose bush stonehenge around there. It was weird as hell, yeah, I know. I was waiting for like Druids to come out of the top of the thumb, which that wouldn't, that wouldn't be good.
No, no, it's just, I feel like, I don't know. Ever since I played the Ouija board, shit just started to go south.
Which play? Was it like...
Well, it's not like when, like how, like ritually, like every night before bed, like see who was in love with me, you know?
Cause I did the same thing.
You did?
Yeah, I wasn't gonna tell anyone, cause, cause I didn't want people to know that I said, yeah, do the rose bushes look like balls? And I went straight to yes. And I was like, holy shit. And then I was like, are those rose bushes haunted? And I let it sit there for a second, said, yes again.
Yeah, yeah.
Said, are there like Bigfoots' sperm in the rose bushes?
Oh, I didn't ask it that.
Oh, no, I'm creative.
Okay, okay, Brett. I, you know, we're in...
Every rose has its thorn.
Yes, yes, yes. That was the thing you did. That was the thing you did a while ago now, a while ago.
Yeah.
And what I, what I would say to you as your agent is, you're, you're at the point in your career where you take everything that comes. You know, you couldn't even play it, you were playing stadium. You were the, now we're at the point where you take everything. So you're going...
I'll take it all and I'll rock it all.
Good, that's the attitude I want. Because there's a full town that wants you to go there. And I'm not sure what they want you to do. It might be playing music. It might not.
What, what would I be without my music? Surely they want me to play my music when I get there. I'm Bret Michaels of Poison.
Yes, I won.
Yes. I hear Bret's gonna be at the festival this year.
No.
I hope he doesn't play any music at all.
No, no, we just want him to be there.
Yeah, I just wanna see him in his bandana.
Yeah, just like maybe for a five-minute photo shoot and that's it.
I just wanna ask trivia.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, and...
Right, right.
Find out his background.
This is gonna be the best.
Oh, I can't wait.
The biggest name we've ever painted.
Brett, I think he was in Poison Michaels.
Yes, that'd be amazing.
Yeah.
Can't wait. Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, we're getting to the big time now.
I know, like what's gonna happen if like maybe next year?
Oh, yeah.
I know.
Maybe Sebastian Bach.
Or Slash. Right? It's gonna be great.
I have Bret Michaels poster online.
You did?
Yeah.
Oh my god, so good. Hi! Was it when he had hair or when he didn't have hair?
You know, it's just like, um, it was like the rest of the band. And I used to put like, you know, Bret Michaels trivia on there and stuff like that.
I used to kiss it.
Oh, I... How do you still think?
T-H-Y-N-K.
Okay, so I got the Bret, I got the I think. He was in... It's two words, right? Po-ine-sun, right?
Poison, oh wait, yeah, no, it is one word, poison.
Oh, it's one word?
Yeah, yeah, it's one word.
I'm making another game, sorry!
Oh, it's okay, it's okay, he's...
No, but this is Bret Michaels!
Yeah, and he has like no, no gigs ever, so he's gonna show up. He's gonna be fine, he's gonna come regardless of your sign, it's okay.
But I want him to know that he's important.
He's, he's so iconic, you know, he...
One T?
Let's go with one T.
Okay, cool. And then if you said a Y and think, that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, cause I wouldn't, I, I mean, we need him here.
Brett, I can't, what does the think have to do with this?
Cause that's his name.
Brett, Brett thinks?
No, Brett, I think he was in Poison Michaels.
Oh, okay, okay. Brett, I think he was in Poison Michaels.
When I was watching him on MTV, cause you know, they haven't had videos for 30 years, so they just have been these little interviews. And they had him there and said, now, here, Brett, I think he was in Poison Michaels.
Oh.
Oh my god, yes, and he was there. So the trouble is clearly that the thumb is large, there's no nail, and it's sort of mushroom-like. That's the problem. We need to dress it up a little bit to defallicize it. You need...
You know that it needs, it needs nail polish, like a bright red thumbnail maybe?
Nail polish, but it is a man's hand, man. We need some more ideas.
Yeah, but it's like a really...
What if it had a ring?
Oh, God.
We really can't put a ring on anything but a thumb.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you can't put a ring on a thumb.
All right, we can put a tight ring around it, I suppose. It would make it look possibly even bigger.
Yeah, we could like have it be like a ring toss and have it vibrate a little bit.
A vibrating ring on a flag, now that's innovation, okay?
I know.
All right, the one Michael Barry impressive, a little larger and vibrating.
Here, here, yeah. Go in the dark. It'll go in the dark, that way you'll always be able to find it.
Right.
And see it.
This is, I don't think this is gonna work. You need to put like blue lines down it or something like that. So look at the size of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What if we write on the flag, this is not penis? That's definitive, I think that's the best idea. Hey, picture the right buddy, good luck when you drive to Chattanooga. Wow, I made it to hitchhiking meta, the thumb, yeah. Oh, wow. It doesn't have a nail. The hell? I don't have bushes next to my thumb. Ooh, I should get a ring on mine, that's a good idea. Ooh, I like that. Have you been? Have you seen the thumb? Hey, man. No, I got a, I got a concert here tonight. I'm sorry, who are you?
It's a Tom amazing DC.
No, I get that a lot. I'm Bret Michaels. Every rose has its thorn. Even those? Especially those. Okay. No, I, I, I'm sorry, I have no idea who you are. Just like every cowboy, seems a sad, sad song. Come on, you know who I am. Oh, chicks love me, okay? Pamela Anderson? Well, yeah, I've heard of her. She was the one on, on Baywatch, right? Yeah, 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 so, so she dated me back then. So does that make you, um, what's it, Hasselhoff, right? Aren't you?
No, he, no, he's the one who gave her the diseases.
Oh, I've given a lot of women diseases, so I... It's what I came here to do, actually. It's what I generally do on festivals. Well, uh, thank god I'm a man.
Oh, that doesn't make a difference.
Alright, my little cutie pie.
Yes.
I am so glad we relocated after our game to the stupid little sleepy town that has nothing.
Yes.
Except...
Yes.
Bon appétit. Which is exactly what we want to have for our citizens. But you know what?
What?
There's a special someone coming to town. Phew, he's from Poison, which means his nails are worth a lot of money. We are going to make...
Okay.
He's going to make...
Hey, do you guys stop caring about Bigfoot?
Oh, it's my little sassy squirrel. So, feel without excuse, you think you were a baby. Come sit, come sit, sassy. Oh, you've grown, you have so much hair.
Thank you.
Oh, my little baby, remember when you were a little baby?
I do.
Little baby, little baby. And then we threw you out like trash, cause you didn't have any fingernails.
Yes, I know.
Yes.
You know, and everybody's just talking about Bret Michaels, even you. You know, this is, this used to be my town, this was Bigfoot country.
Oh, yes, it's still Bigfoot country, but let me tell you a little secret. We crave youth and beauty. Oh, you hear what I'm saying?
Yes.
You were like a fur man.
I am all furry.
Oh, we don't know how you happened. You were kind of like a giant accident. And you, you were sent out for eternity to just be like aloof and everybody wonder, does he exist? We don't know.
I know.
Yeah, I love that. I love doing that. That's my favorite thing. Yeah, yeah, and speaking my language.
And thus, you gave up.
Yeah, because you, you, you stopped caring about me.
Oh, that's not true. I think about you, like, every seven years. Every seven years, I think, remember when we both... Yeah, shit. And you know where you came from?
What?
Ozzy Osbourne's fingernails.
What?
Bret? Bret?
Oh, hello.
We have, we have a recommendation for tonight. Now, I didn't think they were gonna want you to play music, I will say.
Okay.
But they have requested music, but they have some changes.
Oh, cool. Okay.
Every hand has its thumb. You try.
Every hand has its thumb.
And what does that thumb look like?
Every hand's thumb looks like a small, small dick.
That's it, Bret, you've got it.
Okay, I can do this. Hello, Knuckle City!
We love you, Bret! I want to be deep in.
What's my name?
Brett.
Right.
Axelrod.
Oh, okay, well, that's Bret, from, from the band? With the hair. The bear, yeah. Okay, okay, I'll take it, I'll take it. I'm just, I'm really happy to be here on this stage. I'm gonna sing a little song for you that you might have heard before on the radio. Every hand has its thumb. Just like every thumb looks like a dick. Just like every hand sings a sad, sad song. Every thumb has its... Honey, honey, come here. I've been waiting all year for this festival. Oh, here we go. Wait, is that all it is? Thank you so much, our Town Council! You wanna thank, uh, Miami Football Fest and Justin Funny for having us? It's been a wonderful festival, such a good time. Uh, if you wanna follow us, you can find us on Instagram at Parker Players or Facebook slash Parker Players. Uh, like you said, we're from Denver, Colorado. If you're over there, come check us out at the Buck Theater in Lohi. You're a wonderful audience. It was a great weekend. Please see the rest of the shows here, and have a great time. Thank you so much, we love you!